And so we feel that we're presenting you with a balanced budget for the Tacoma Public Schools that you will move to adopt later in the meeting. So with that, I introduce you to Kristin Heather.
Okay, as Ron said, I'm Kristin Heather, Director of Budget, and I am really happy to be able to present this. This budget has been quite the wild ride this year. You should all have one of these documents with you. This is the official F-195 that we're required by the state to submit each year. And so the numbers that I'm talking to you, if you look at, just thumb through it, it's all codes and numbers and it's, you have to know the background of it. But anyway, hopefully the presentation will give you a little bit more insight to what's going on. Just since the last three weeks or so, we had some public commentary at the last meeting and we're finishing up the balancing of the budgets and such, and there were three areas that were brought up at the last meeting, and Avid, parent involvement and partnership, and disproportionate discipline. And there were additional funds put into those proposals that alluded to the items that are on the PowerPoint. So there was some additional staff for professional development this summer that happened. The building sites have plans for Avid implementation. We're focusing on teaching best practices. We increased the budget by $60,000 and they've increased rigorous coursework. And I do have, if anyone wants to, I do have the draft document of the budget proposals in those particular areas if anyone's interested in the detail of those.
Just really quickly, when we did the work, we wanted to ensure that our work was directly tied to our benchmarks. So you'll notice Avid's not a benchmark that we adopted. Academic rigor is, and the support through Avid helps supports academic rigor. And so the staff, through their due diligence and through budget requests, continue to look at the benchmarks as the filters and where appropriate, added support. And so although we are highlighting these three because there is a connection with the community's feedback, it's very important for us, for you to know that we are staying with your commitment to benchmarks and priority budgeting.
Thank you. In addition, I'm sorry, in addition to the parent involvement, there was a $35,000 increase to that. And then we have some new grant dollars this year from the City of Tacoma that will help with the disproportionate discipline and Jennifer Capista had a large part in. And so we're busily working on that and moving forward. The next slide talks about kind of the enrollment trends from the last 10 years to the next 10 years, and this is based on the demographers data. As you'll see, based on the arrows, we are trending, you know, it's not a ton of kids, but it is, it's all, they're all green looking forward, which is a good thing. So if you look at the individual areas, it's just by grade and group there. So this does not also, this is just on the demographers data, and any impacts from charter schools, we won't see as of yet. We'll see that in next year's data. Okay, down to the numbers. So this slide represents the general fund budget impacts as a whole. Bottom line is, we have $30.397 million in new revenues and $30.397 in new expenditures. They're broken down through basic education and categorical local funds and then the fund balance reallocation. So if you look at the basic education, the top line there, you'll notice that our expenditures outweigh our revenue by $2.4 million. What that represents is $2 million of fund balance was moved into basic ed. So we paid for it through the fund balance of the prior year and we've moved it over into basic ed. And then there's also about 405,000 of categorical indirects that live in the expenditures for basic ed rather than, so for every dollar we get from a categorical, we'll pull out an indirect for overhead and such, and that goes through the expenditures of the basic The next slide is the basic education and local expenditure impacts, and you look down at the bottom there, and that's $25.907 million. Those first two lines are worth $14 million of our increases, and those are the salary increases and union negotiations and the retirement and health, which we had mentioned before. The legislature did give COLAs this year, but as you all know, they don't fund 100% of that, so we have to pick up additional dollars to pay those off. And then the pensions went up substantially this year. So also, we have the class size adjustments and the K-3 high poverty, that's coming in from the legislature where we need to have less students per class, more teachers. We've got some money going into curriculum and instruction, which was planned, the technology, ongoing funding, which is planned. The transportation funding, the legislature, two years ago, I think, they will fund us up to what we spend each year. So though it's an increase in expenditure, we should see an increase in revenue the following year of that same amount. The school support staff adjustments represent things such as, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the school support, help me out.
School support were the principals, assistant principals, office coordinators, anything that was at a school, additional support staff that was added to schools.
Thank you. The educational program enhancements, we have some, few projects, Avid's on that list, the preschool programs, we're doing some work at McHarver and so forth. And then the sheltered programs, there's that $2 million that we just spoke of, increase there. And then we have some various operational changes, and there's quite a long list, but I'm happy to share any individual information with you. Okay, so what the budget adoption represents tonight that you would hopefully be signing are these numbers on here. You'll see these same numbers on that resolution. So the, well, you'll see the expenditure, but the general fund budget, the total revenues for the 15, 16-year are totaling $384,654,272. And then our expenditures are totaling $390,922,149, which is a difference of 6.267 million. The revenues, as you can see, we have an increase of $30 million in revenues and an increase of 26 in revenues, or excuse me, in expenditures from last year, which is a $3.43 million difference in use of fund balance. So that's a good sign. And what that $6.2 million in the fund balance, as you can see, $2 million of it is still one more year's worth of those sheltered programs, so hopefully next year they'll be wiped out. And then we have about $2 million in carryover allocations and $2.2 million for curriculum and instruction. As far as the other funds, the debt service fund, which as you know is used to manage the debts of the district and the debt obligations, has an expenditure budget of $59,579,125. And we currently have 300, a little over 300 million of outstanding bonds. The associated student body has an expenditure budget of $3.881,670, and as you know, that also is the kids' money and we are, we help them manage it, but it truly is the students' money. The transportation vehicle fund has an expenditure budget of $1,610,000, and there's a plan to purchase 13 buses in the 15, 16-year. And then capital projects. There's a plan to, there's an expenditure plan of $177,850,000, and you'll see on the slide, there are six different projects that are in action right now that I know Steve Merkami has mentioned at prior meetings. This slide represents the union impacts in FTE from last year's budget to this year's budget. So as you can see, if you look on that far right-hand slide, bus drivers are up 3 FTE, the non-represented folks are up 8 FTE, child nutrition is down 7.19, maintenance is up 2, the office professionals and professional technical are up 14.53, principals are up 10 FTE, and the paraprofessionals are 5.25. And then we have an additional 38.2 teachers budgeted this year. This slide is the culmination-
Director Biall, did you have a question?
I do. Can you stop? Why did the child nutrition go down? Do you know? I know Paul's here, maybe he answered that.
Yeah, we, are you here, Paul?
I'm here.
Yeah, come on up. Do you want to answer it? Come on up and say it.
Sure. Do you want to run the review?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't have the answer, you can get it later. I'm just curiosity, a couple of questions if you have or clarification.
Well, basically, every year we go through a process of updating and staffing the kitchens to make sure we're at the current level. So as we prove that, there are adjustments. Some of the meal counts are down, some are up, so that's where the FTE would be adjusted.
Okay, so it basically is driven by the number of kids within each school? Is that-
Right, and the staffing of the needs of the school.
Right, so if enrollment is switched around or whatever, then you, you're, what I guess what I'm saying is these numbers then reflect enrollment shifts, is that correct? Somewhat.
Well, yes.
I'm probably simplifying it a bit, but-
We provide service to the schools, so if the count goes down, we don't need as many hours-
That's what I'm saying, we're not getting as many kids having lunch or whatever. Okay, thanks, Paul, appreciate that. Just one other, a clarification, when this says principals, I assume that includes assistant principals?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so this next slide is the culmination of the whole budgeting by priorities process, and it allows us to get these percentages of how each of our dollars are spent as they align to the strategic plan. So as you can see, the academic excellence, which we would expect, is the highest at 71.4%, followed by support services at 23.4, early learning 2.9, then safety at 2.1, and partnerships at .2. This is, we did check, and this is very similar to last year's breakdown. Okay, so moving forward, as we look for the next, toward the next five years in the multi-year plan, for this year, part of the plan was to reduce that fund balance by $2 million. We provided curriculum and instruction with $1 million, and that was planned out, and that was a final allocation to them. We're beginning a technology allocation to fund additional technology for $1 million, and then we're remaining, keeping the debt and fiscal reserve at 5%, which is what you approved at your new policy last year. And then as we look into the future, we have to keep the McCleary decision in our forefront until 2018, and we're looking at next year, hopefully that fund balance reliance will be eliminated and the maintenance level budget established, we're working on that. This is a visual picture of where we suspect that the fund balance will be between now and the next five years. And if you look at that first column for 15 and 16, you can see the green represents $2 million of the fund balance reliance, and then 4.27 represents that CNI curriculum money and the carryover dollars. And then looking into 16, 17, we're estimating or projecting a 5.21 surplus, the next year a 9.3 surplus, 8.5, and then a $2 million surplus in 1920. Here's another way to look at the fund balance as a total, an actual total amounts of dollars. So August of 2015, about $35 million in the bank, if you will. And of that, 17.81 represents that debt and fiscal 5%, and then the 17.27, or the red columns, represent other designated dollars that are sitting in our fund balance that have either assigned or committed purposes to them. And then we are anticipating about a $1 million budget savings, if you will, from what we actually spend from what we budget in years 16 through 20. And as we look into the future for next year's budget, probably starting tomorrow-
Why wait?
Right. We're gonna take these areas into consideration, and we're gonna look at additional cost of living adjustments and the underfunding of salaries, the minimum wage initiatives that are all in the news and everything that we keep hearing about, pension increases, the Affordable Care Act's going to have a financial impact, the levy and LEA adjustments, the charter school impacts, we're gonna wait and see, we're getting close to the actual start of that, and so we'll have some better numbers with that. And then the initiative to reduce class sizes, as you know, that was put on hold for now, and so I'm sure we'll have some more information to come on that. And then just, you know, where the economic stability goes in the forecast for Washington State. Go ahead.
Yeah. I would just like to express the gratitude from both the Budget Department and myself on all of the hard work that went into the budget, not only from the Budget Team, but also the Board's leadership, the Budget Managers and Program Managers that have done so much work to get to where we are, the Superintendent and all of my fellow Cabinet members. It's really been an incredible year in a lot of ways, and without the good work and dedication from all of you, it would have been so much more difficult. So I want to thank you. And then specifically, I would really appreciate being able to thank the Budget Team, which includes a number of those staff members that are here. If they would please stand up, I know they hate this. They're numbers people, they don't want public attention. But Kristin, as well as Robyn Derby, Jody Slaughter, Walter Buford, Rose Owens, and Mary Kay Richardson, so thank you all, to all of them.
Thank you.
And that's our presentation.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments? Director Wensko.
Yeah, so I asked a question a while ago about libraries, for one thing, and musical instruments. Were we able to put any of that into the budget?
Right, so we, and what we've done to address that is build an equipment replacement plan. And it's $900,000 that's in place within the budget, and what we have to do now is look at the equipment across the district and develop an equipment replacement schedule for a number of those areas. And that would include the music, it would include library books at individual schools, it would also include things like food service, refrigerators, and vehicles. And that we would develop an ongoing, every year schedule, so that as things come out of service or need replacing, we would have a dedicated place to get those funds from.
So I looked, we do have some kitchen replacement item later on the budget, and it's actually fairly high-
Yes.
... cost, and also vehicles are pretty expensive, so I would be hope, I would really like to see that number increase in the future, or dedicate certain amount for libraries and musical instruments that really reflects what we need, instead of promptly having what's left over. Okay, go ahead. Is there something more?
I think you have to turn it on.
It should be on. Is it on? Okay.
Much better.
Okay.
I hear you.
Good. The other question I have is on the percentage for people in non-teaching positions, administrative positions. So what is that percentage?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I can go back and do the math while I'm in the break and let you know. It's just the number of people who are non-teachers versus teachers, is that the question?
Well, I'm talking more about administrative. And I see that we've increased quite a bit over the year, and not only that, but we've actually reclassified people, so I would suspect that the budget for administrators is up considerably. And I would say to Deputy Superintendent that I'd really like to have a philosophical discussion on approaches to this budget in future years, and like to see a lot more money in going to the classroom and to people working with students directly. So as we get increases from the legislature in the next few years.
May I add one thing? You had made a request at our prior meeting to have some information sent to you on administrative costs and administrative leave costs, and that'll be included in the Friday report this week. And then the legal costs, we are in the process of working on and should be, and should be either in the Friday report this week or next week? Shannon can provide it, well, do you want to do it right here?
Okay.
If you would like to hear about the legal expenses, Shannon can provide them to you now, or she can send it to you in a report form at your discretion.
It's a pleasure of the Board. I, you know, we have a lot on our plate. I mean, I don't mind hearing it, but-
How lengthy of a presentation is it?
Why don't I just include it in the Friday report?
Thank you.
Okay, that'd be great. And then if we have follow-up questions, we can bring it back.
And I would hope there would be comparison from last year to this year also.
Yes.
Okay.
And I just want to mention, when you look at the percentages of the budgeting by strategic plan priority, when you see support services in there, that includes food service, custodial, maintenance, transportation, administration. So it's, it's a large percentage, but it really is all the supportive for the district, not necessarily just the administrative, I just want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
And building on that, and it's on slide number 10, could you just quickly walk us through academic excellence represents 71.4%? So what sort of things are included in the academic excellence?
Sort of program-wise or-
Cost factors, I think you-
Oh, there's two, the 279 million? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
So, make sure I understand the question.
Give it a shot and-
Okay. So the goal is all students perform at or above grade level and will eliminate disparities among all groups of students. So included in that, I'm looking at the wrong thing, included in that are-
All classroom teachers.
Classroom teachers, CTE, special education.
Building administration. Potentially curriculum and instruction.
Yes. Most, I can almost tell you what isn't in academic excellence because it's-
I guess what I'm trying to parse out in response to maybe clarify where we were going with Director Wensko's question was how much, she was talking about investment in the classroom. So can you correlate academic excellence, I believe, it's 70% of our, over 70% of our budget? So what's included in that versus the support services, which is the second largest percentage representation of our budget? Because that would give us some level of understanding of what's going into the classroom to directly impact students, and then what are these other peripheral support services that have a support role that may not be directly in the classroom?
Right, and we had well over 200 and what, 220 proposals in total? And so it's an accumulation of probably 190 proposals that went in there. You know, big picture items, it's every classroom teacher, it's every, yeah, every, everything that's being directly impacted in a school, of course, but you know, the principals, the office staff would be included there.
Building administration.
Yeah, I'm thinking like noon hour supervisors and crossing guard work, and I think I'm probably not going to be able to give you a very good representation of it in a, you know, quick verbal.
I have a list, though, of every proposal-
That's what I was gonna request, if we could do that, and that's fitting with the discussions that we've had about tying things so that we can see them, and I think that'll be coming in the report. I want to make a comment about support services. Having done a little bit of this work myself at one time or another, those are very much, that percentage is in line with what even 40 years ago, the State of Washington used at about a 20% figure, even higher than that when you added salaries, wages, and things in for overhead. So we're in the ballpark with everyone else, if that's what people are concerned about. And that is everything that we, that we don't do, and we also have to, when we go through this, you will see in early learning, those are also classroom activities too, I assume, within each one of our benchmarks. So from what I understand, talking with you and we get into, we get the actual program budget, we will see those ties and what actually is in the classroom and what isn't, and how many teachers, how many FTEs are within both of those. And that's coming soon, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay, so-
By end of September, we're gonna have that.
Right, that's what I thought.
And I think that we can actually provide you with a clearer document within the next Friday report.
Good.
Yeah, definitely.
Director Olska.
I have a question and maybe just a comment from my peers. So when we're looking at academic excellence, it includes teachers that we're funding in classrooms, of course, and of course you need those for academic excellence. However, prior to having academic excellence as a strategic initiative, we also funded teachers. So what's the difference, if that makes any sense? I think it's a more philosophical question for the Board to see that we're, that the money is being driven towards that goal and not just being called that because we're spending it anyway.
So part of the process of building these proposals was we had teams called results teams that sat down and looked at best practices for academic excellence and had all these kind of bullet points that they would need to hit. And so then the program directors would incorporate or look to how their program uses or identifies those particular things in their proposal, and then they would, if there was a shortage or something, well, maybe they weren't using adequate professional development or something like that, then it was kind of this tip-off to say, we need to incorporate more professional development in that particular area with existing dollars.
So what I'm hearing is that is articulated in the detail. That's just what I want to make sure of.
And it's based on our request as a Board to begin to build budgets that were aligned with the strategic plan and the benchmarks, and then moving towards that proposal format similar to decision packages at the state legislature, so you don't just automatically get money.
Right.
You have to articulate a business case for why you're requesting the money.
Right, and we received a fantastic book last year that detailed a lot of that, but for the public that hasn't watched every meeting for the last three years, they might not know that either. And so I just want to make sure that we remember that, that that information is available.
And I hear that's coming. That's a part of, yeah, it'll be available.
If I could comment, when we talk about proposals, that just simply means budget requests.
Correct.
In new jargon, just like decision packages were designed by myself and Wally Miller in 1974, and they weren't called decision packages then, they were just part of budget instructions as to fleshing out and moving things forward. So for, you know, we just use different jargon, but for people to understand, these are just each program, what they are requesting in a format that we're asking them to do so, which is tied to the benchmarking and their-
And data.
-what they've done in the previous year, what they're going to do, and where they, where they fit within their benchmark goals. And I think by the time we get through this one next year, it'll be much, much clearer to all of us. But I want to commend you because this is a whole major shift in the way we think and the way we do things in budgets, and we're doing a good job to where we are. I was pleased to see that chart, that tells me we're in the right direction. So their, their budget requests, and one of the things that's difficult, just from a budgeting standpoint sometimes, and this is just my own comment, because I've done this all, most of my career in budget one time or another, is figuring out what to charge off to what. So there are, for example, if a teacher is working in kindergarten and then maybe doing some teaming with a first-grade teacher on some other things that we're doing, where do we charge that off? And how do we charge that off? And that's something that I know you guys are struggling with, and it'll, it'll start shaking out at some point. So this, this won't be perfect the first time, it won't be perfect probably the second, but by the time we get to the third one, I know it'll be where we want to be. So thank you.
Thank you.
Director Olska, did you have any additional budget questions?
No, thank you.
So I appreciate the, just a Herculean task that we charged you with a couple of years ago, and you did it so well out of the gate, I believe we won a national award.
Yeah, we actually, sorry to interrupt.
No, no.
We got, I'm so excited. We got notification yesterday that we also won a Washington Finance Officers Association Award, a local award on our budget presentation as well.
Congratulations.
Very exciting. Thanks.
And are there other districts in the State of Washington that are using this sort of an approach to the budget?
None that I'm aware of.
So we're trailblazing when we talk about innovation, and it's not a marketing slogan, it's a methodology, and we apply that throughout our organization. So I appreciate all of the good work that's gone into it. I had one question relating to the purchase of the 13 buses. So we've expressed an interest as a Board in identifying alternative fuel, at least to comparison, understand a diesel bus versus other compressed natural gas or other options that are out there. So is that, when you've budgeted, what have you used for your budget projections to determine the amount of money for 13 buses?
Right, and the cost of the 13 buses is usually just an estimate of where the state contract allows us to spend on a bus, because we generally follow the state contract. And my last conversation with Ms. Race was that there's diesel options on there, and that I think that's a natural gas option, but there weren't other options as far as buses were concerned. And so we can revisit what that looks like, but we use the average cost of the state contract's bus to come up with a budget, and that's really just an outline. We're not tied to purchasing 13 buses, and so it just gives us the flexibility to purchase the 13 if we need to.
Okay. And with respect to the proposals that are submitted, were they all approved, all accepted? Or were there proposals that were denied?
No, they were, yeah, I think we had, we had many millions of dollars of non-approved items. And we have all the documentation on what was asked for versus what was approved, and we're in the process now of notifying everybody of what was approved and what wasn't.
And what percent of the total budget, not all of the budgeted money was tied to proposals, is that correct?
No, everything's part of a proposal.
100%? Okay, was tied to a proposal, they said.
Yeah, we put everything into one package of some kind.
Okay. Deputy Superintendent?
Just real quickly, I want to thank the staff. As you've articulated, this is complex. This document right here is, is what I'd describe as gravity, which means that the team really has to build two budgets. One, in the sense of filling out the compliance issues that have not necessarily- One, in the sense of filling out the compliance issues that have not necessarily traditionally translated to outcomes for students. And then the one that we all believe in, which is you've given us guidance to, which is how are we making sure the resources are getting to services that are changing the outcome for students? And so, what we have here is this gravity that the team has to get through in a short amount of time with limited efforts. And then what you'll have come in September is that document that will answer many more of your questions. And I think also provide a level of transparency to the community to build continued trust that we are investing their resources, that they have voted on and supported in manners that are aligned to the outcomes that we have agreed to as a community for student success. And so, on behalf of the superintendent and the rest of the cabinet and the rest of the, the school staff, we want to thank the team that has done this. We want to thank each individual department that has submitted a proposal, those are not easy. We want to thank the community for their feedback because they have provided and continue to improve our process. We hope that they hear that we're listening to them, we're taking those comments seriously, we're asking ourselves, how does that help us move the needle based on evidence-based practices that are producing? And when we see that, we're able to move in there. And we want to once again thank you for your leadership. We appreciate the beacon of where we need to go. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to work there and we appreciate your knowledge and expertise to know that it can't just happen overnight. So thank you.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Let's move on to item number two, public testimony regarding the 2015-16 budget. Do we have people wishing to testify?
At this time, I do not have any request to speak on the budget.
Okay, then we'll close this portion of the meeting and we will move into our regular business meeting. Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four-zero. Item number two, recognition of staff, students, and community. Do you have any recognitions this evening?
Not this evening.
We'll move on to item number three, members of the public wishing to address the board. Do you have any members wishing to address the board this evening?
Yes, we do. We will start with Mr. Lucas Smiraldo, excuse me, Smiraldo. I apologize for speaking on the topic of the achievement gap.
The school board members encourage public participation, your input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone, you will have up to three minutes to share your comments. At the one-minute mark, you'll hear a ding, at the zero-minute mark, you'll hear a second ding. Please proceed.
As the director of the Vibrant Schools Tacoma Coalition, I'm leading off tonight. Although I must tell you that based on my questionable foot speed, we are all much better with me in front of this podium rather than on a baseball diamond trying to leg out an infield hit. This here is about all the leadoff that I can handle. I want to begin by thanking our superintendent and our deputy superintendent and school board president for welcoming several of one-on-one preliminary conversations that in some ways challenged the prevalent thinking around family income as the main factor leading to academic disparities. Over the course of our five years of existence at Vibrant Schools, our coalition has been a safe haven for the many anecdotes, stories, and concerns that have reinforced our conclusion that race indeed does matter in the context of education. It matters in the way our youth are instructed, it matters in the culture and expectations at individual schools, it matters in the ethnic composition of our faculty. It matters in how the curriculum does or does not reflect the diverse experiences of our students and families. And it matters in how we apply and measure our new equity policy. Those stories form a picture that causes us to look deeper into an achievement gap that has persisted over forty years in the Tacoma schools, along with many other districts across the nation. But Vibrant Schools is not and will never be a coalition driven by stories alone. We want data. We want to investigate that data, and when we see evidence of deeper systemic problems, we want to work with the leadership of this district to confront these problems, to ask the right questions, and to join with our many partners, parents, nonprofit organizations, and other friends to interrupt, intervene, and change the outcome. That's why we're here tonight. We have harvested evidence provided by the school district in its new spirit of transparency, which now supports our concerns that we cannot ignore how students of different racial and ethnic backgrounds may have different experiences in support of their learning. In the next few minutes, we're going to hear testimony from our coalition partners at the NAACP around concerns for African-American students and other partners. And we will offer some specific information about the data we have uncovered. We're not here to criticize, we are here to construct, so we'll suggest some immediate next steps. We will also ask you to take into account the needs of Latino students as voiced by Liesel Sankeyl in her dual role as a member of the Vibrant Schools Steering Committee and the director of Stanford Children, which works extensively with Latino families. I'd leave you with one request during my particular testimony. Vibrant Schools believes the information we are sharing and its implications deserve a school board study session. Our kids deserve our full intelligence, intention, courage, and willingness to name and solve these problems. And we know that you have the power and capacity to help us do this. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Jonathan Johnson representing the NAACP, speaking on the topic of the achievement gap.
Thank you again, and I do like to remind myself that this is a group of friends. But I want to share with a few friends some stories that we've amassed at the NAACP as we've advocated for, for students. None of the names are used and none of the individual schools are used. But I will start with four, three stories, one about Bill, Harry, and Raymond. Bill did something that was unacceptable in the school. Bill was no longer able to participate in any class activities. Bill must sit only with a student-teacher, and he sits there day after day. Students in Bill's class learn how Bill will be treated in the classroom and on the playing field. Teacher, can I join the reading group? Can I be in, no. After five months, Bill is invisible. After five, after, if you, one month, Bill is invisible, after five months, Bill, Bill feels lost. After eight months, he doesn't care, and he begins to get angry. Harry, not his real name, a middle-school student, has been suspended several times. His principal decides that these were unjustified suspensions. Harry is referred to an alternative program, but Harry feels that they must have forgotten because it just never happens. Harry's mom finds someone in her church that might be able to help. She's referred to the Northwest Leadership Foundation. Very shortly after Harry joins the group, Harry is able to get someone who cares about him and was moving along quite well. But at the first outing, the culture of the bus that he was on, students were teasing him and Harry gets in a fight. Harry is expelled. Raymond, not his real name, ninth grader, is bullied every day. He feels untouchable. Raymond ignores his bully and continues to be bullied day after day, until one day, the bully charges at, at Raymond. The teacher steps in front, the, the teacher is injured or, or is hit. And Raymond is now trying to find out when this kid is going to attack him again. Billy is afraid, Billy feels like he's, he's not safe. He can't figure out why they keep calling him African-American, he's Panamanian. Billy now ends up in a situation where he doesn't feel like he belongs. Billy's, I'm sorry, Raymond's mother decides that they must leave the state because there's nothing here for them.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Sally Perkins, speaking on the achievement gap.
Thank you very much and good evening. Vibrant Schools knows that the board and the district care deeply about solving achievement gap issues for students of color. And we share that deep commitment. The purpose of our testimony here is to move that process forward with a greater sense of urgency so that all of Tacoma's young people have bright futures for their work, their families, and in this community. So I dug into the district's data to try to answer the question, does poverty drive the achievement gap in Tacoma? What role, if any, does race play? I had this question because so much of the conversation about the achievement gap here focuses on poverty. So I pulled the data for third, fourth, fifth grade reading and math percentage meeting the state standard on the state test for 2010 through fourteen. I looked at students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, which is the measure of poverty that schools use, and students who do not qualify. White students overall consistently score higher, often by twenty percentage points or more than black or Latino students. That's the general achievement gap. If poverty were the main issue, though, then all of the free and reduced no students, white, black, Latino, whoever, would generally tend to meet the standard at about the same rate. But that's not what happens. The white free and reduced no students score way higher than the black and Latino free and reduced no students. And the stunner was that the white free and reduced yes students often score the same or even higher than the black and Latino free and reduced no students. Putting it another way, more affluent black and Latino students often score the same or even lower than impoverished white students consistently. So while poverty may play a part in the achievement gap, race plays a bigger part here in Tacoma. These data are not unique to Tacoma. Around the country, Michigan, Wisconsin, Boston, Washington DC, the Council of Great City Schools have all found the same result. And I will note that the initial results are similar for Pacific Islander and Native American students, but because the numbers are smaller, they need a different type of analysis. To address this significant race-driven gap, Vibrant Schools respectfully requests the board to take the following actions. First, hold a study session to study these data in more depth and understand their importance for effectively addressing the achievement gap for children of color. Begin an ongoing dialogue with community members about what the data mean and what strategies will most effectively address the gap. Assign district staff to bring regularly to the board equivalent state test data for these and other grade levels and for the multiple measures that are used for internal assessment, including measures of student growth. Include analysis of school-level data in the published data and publish these in a user-friendly format. Third, develop and publish clear numeric goals for closing the achievement gap through strengthening academic results for students of color, both the state test scores and the multiple measures that you use internally. Deliver regular reports to the community on the progress being made, we might call this the achievement gap community dashboard. Direct district staff to develop, a little bit further, direct, district staff to develop a comprehensive and integrated draft plan to eliminate the achievement gap, including evidence-based strategies that will improve academic results for students of color. Publish the plan, the draft plan and invite the community to participate in finalizing it. Finally, commit to learning more about and understanding more fully the impacts of institutionalized racism. The opportunity and challenge that we all have here is to build awareness of how we all unintentionally can contribute to institutionalized racism without realizing it. This is a lifelong learning opportunity for all of us. We share your commitment to solving the achievement gap and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Final card is from Ms. Liesel Sankeyl, speaking on the achievement gap.
Good evening. President Hines, Superintendent Santorina, who's missing, but I hope she'll listen to this later. Deputy Director Garcia and members of the school board. My name is Liesel and I'm, I'm here with Vibrant Schools. And as director of Stanford Children, to thank you for your work on the Tacoma Strategic Plan and placing academic achievement for all our students as well as safety as two of the top priorities. Now we ask you to dive into the race disparities in these two areas at a deeper and more strategic level. And we ask you to be open about what you are doing to address these disparities in achievement and safety. We want to see more transparency about how it is working as well. I'm going to talk a little bit about Latino statistics, and I'm going to first tell a story of myself. I, I grew up in Mexico and came to the United States in third grade as an immigrant, although I'm of Venezuelan descent. And I, it was very hard adjustment, even though I came from a very educated family. I did not grow, come here to Tacoma Public Schools, I was in public schools in Wisconsin. But my experience has colored the way I look at kids here in Tacoma Public Schools and what I know to be true about the welcoming environments in order for students to achieve. So one of my passions is to make sure that the Latino students achieve at similar levels to their counterparts. And we don't see that when we look at the picture of the data here in Tacoma. For example, on the just recently released Smarter Balanced Results 2014-15, third grade, English, English and Language Arts meeting standard, Hispanic and Latino students are only thirty, thirty-two percent here in Tacoma meeting standards. Whereas their white counterparts are meeting standards at fifty-three-point-eight percent, which is still not great. But at half the rate, or nearly a little bit over half the rates of the white, their white counterparts. In eighth-grade math, twenty-seven percent Hispanic and Latino are meeting standard and white at forty-six-point-eight percent of the population. I work with a lot of families in the Latino community. They struggle in many ways to help their students, but they want to achieve at, at similar levels and they need supports to make that happen. You've heard Vibrant Schools talk about some next steps, so I'm going to continue in that vein. Recommendation is a strong district-wide system for data-driven decision-making that is focused on closing achievement and opportunity gaps. With an effective data-driven decision-making system, Tacoma can more easily analyze performance data by important student subgroups, challenge assumptions, and address problems at the school and classroom level. Use the data to help improve teacher quality. Tacoma should use data-driven decisions-making to highlight specific and targeted professional development needs of district staff and make better staff development investments. Three, use data to support curriculum development so that it's aligned to the learning standards and needs of what students need. Four, look at these results and other sources of data such as classroom observation, district, and classroom assessments to identify patterns, gaps, and what's working and what's not. This will help us do two important things. One, share best practices on what is working. And two, drill down to the root causes of the problem so that we're addressing the whole problem and not just the symptom. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, that's all the public comment for today's evening.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, is there a superintendent's report this evening?
No, not this evening, we have a very full agenda, so we've decided to not have a superintendent's report.
Okay, item number five, consent calendar, do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four-zero.
I apologize, real quickly, Mr. President, each of you got also a written public comment. We won't read the public comment because it's submitted, but we want to make sure those folks that know when they sit and write in form a public comment to you folks that you do get a copy of it for your review. Apologize for the interruption.
Item number six, policy matter six-eight, approval of policy two-four-one-zero, high school graduation requirements and participation in formal graduation ceremonies.
On behalf of the superintendent of K-12 Learning Support, the deputy superintendent recommends the Board of Directors approve revised policy twenty-four-ten and charging of the superintendent or designate to update and align the corresponding regulation twenty-four-ten R to the newly revised policy. So are we approving this tonight, then? It's not a first reading?
If someone could move for discussion, I'll explain that.
Okay, I'll move that we accept this.
The revision needs to be in place before the start of the school year. And there, with the timing of the meetings in the summer and the change of the July meetings, which switch dates fairly rapidly, the finished product of this was not available until this meeting. And so it does need to be in place in time for it to be our policy in the, for the start of the 2015-2016 school year. And the change basically aligns with the new change in state law that allows for particular exceptions to be made to particular graduation requirements and individual circumstances. And this allows for the superintendent's designees to implement a regulation to accompany that before the start of the school year.
And was that driven out by OSPI or WASDA?
The change, yes.
Or state, state board, probably.
They, the, there was tremendous advocacy from WASDA associated with allowing some flexibility at the local level and at the principal level to make certain exceptions when a student has met every graduation requirement. But there is some outstanding requirement. I think it was initially tied up with the biology requirement, but also was seen as a way to be equitable into taking into account that individual students may face exceptional circumstances and there should be some local flexibility.
Director Vial.
I do believe this did come from the state board and then OSPI issued us to, because I raised a question when we did a gender review whether we actually needed a first reading and it was felt that we really didn't because this was just bringing us into compliance with state law, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Director Wenskell.
So I have a question. I do think that the section on having exceptions is, is a good idea. Because think medical, people have medical emergencies and things like that. emergencies and things like that that could help hinder their graduation. So we obviously don't have to have the specifics done before school starts, it sounds like, because it's left up to the superintendent?
There is already a draft regulation, so should you approve this today, then Cabinet would review and finalize that draft regulation on Tuesday and circulate it to the board next Friday. So all of that would be in place prior to the start of the school year.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Director Eshka?
So I definitely value us having local flexibility to address individual students' needs. I think that's absolutely something we need to do. Quick question on this policy. It says for individual students who have experienced unusual circumstances, would the fact that the State Board of Education changes the criteria be an unusual circumstance for most students?
That certainly would be.
Just making sure that that would be included in this policy. Great.
The draft regulation will ensure that it's there, but I think that there is language about that already in it, based on the concern we all had three months ago about the biology requirement.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just want to add real quickly that, you know, there's districts that are across the nation. San Francisco most recently has recognized some of the limitations with certain requirements that are not functional, that are not supported locally, and has taken steps to, bold steps to recognize what their local control is. And so you folks have done similar things in the past regarding what you think accountability means, innovation means. So this continues to allow us that flexibility in moving that direction.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Item number seven, quarterly financial update.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Patty Luat will come up and give you a presentation of our third quarter financials.
Good evening, President Hines, members of the board, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Garcia. I'm pleased to present the quarterly financial update. So I guess we need to, oh, great. So slide one has the budgeted and projected annual average FTE through June 2015 and the comparison to last year. Our budgeted annual average FTE enrollment is twenty-six thousand seven hundred and fourteen. This excludes the eight hundred and sixty budgeted FTE for full-day kindergarten, which is projected to be about thirty-two FTE above budget. Overall, enrollment is projected to be seven hundred and twenty-one FTE above budget.
Real quickly, Ms. Luat, these numbers also do not include our preschool programming, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Our enrollment is projected to be about three hundred and fifteen FTE higher than last year. So next, moving on to the second slide, this is where we have our budgeted and projected annual average FTE through July. And so our certificated staffing is fifty-two FTE above budget. Classified staffing is fifty-five FTE below budget. And when we compare to last year, our certificated staffing increased forty-three FTE from last year and six FTE in the classified staffing category. Next, I'll talk a little bit about where we're at in terms of our revenues and expenditures and our ending fund balance. As you can see, our beginning fund balance was one point one million above budget. Our revenue is projected to be about three point four million above budget. Of this amount, four hundred and thirty-one thousand of it is in local taxes. In our local non-tax, we're projected to be about nine hundred and six thousand above budget. I always talk to you about this, but our state general purpose is about four million above budget, and that's our apportionment, and that's because we have about three hundred and fourteen FTE, as I talked about on the first slide, above budget. In addition to that, that's part of the McCleary money that we had received as part of that. And our special purpose category is projected to be about four point three million above budget, and this has to do with about two point seven million in transportation revenue, two hundred and sixty-three thousand in transitional bilingual revenue, seven hundred and eighty thousand in special education revenue, and about four hundred and four thousand in special and pilot programs for school improvement grants. So in looking at our expenditures, we're projected to be about eight point eight million below budget. And we always come to you and talk to you a little bit about where we're making the savings in our salaries and benefits, and that's going to be about five point one million of that eight point eight. Our supplies are projected to be about three point nine million below budget, and this is the category where we also budget for capacity. So looking at our ending fund balance, we're projected to be about thirteen point four million above budget. Next, in looking at slide number four, this is a visual of how we began the year with eight point seven in the assigned for future operations.
I'm sorry, could we go back? Is it above budget or below budget?
I'm sorry? Did we say it's above?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
It's over. Over budget. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right.
So looking at this visual, we began the year with eight point seven million in the assigned for future operations, and we're currently projected to save about four point seven million this year. So moving on to the last slide, our projected ending fund balance is to be about thirteen point four million above budget. And so I'd like to do a little recap on that. Our salaries and benefits of this are about seven point eight million, and we did talk about that a little bit. The CNI carryovers looking to be about one point seven million. And then we have the miscellaneous carryovers for Title I, CTE, LAP, and the schools for the one point four million.
Director Viall?
For people that don't understand what that carryover is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that has to do with the difference in the fiscal years of the federal government and our fiscal year. Is that correct?
That's correct. In the case of Head Start, they fall on the fiscal year, that's the federal fiscal year. And then there's also restrictions for carryovers such as LAP and for CTE, we're required to give them their carryovers, and so we do have to plan for that.
Great. Thank you. Because sometimes people don't understand what that means, and there are, actually, we deal with three fiscal years. People I don't think realize that. We deal with the state fiscal year, which goes June to June, and then we deal with the federal, which goes October to October, and our own, which goes September to September, correct?
September through August.
Well, August.
Yes.
I mean, that's why I was surprised you're starting so early for next year, a whole week and a half.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for the update. We'll move on to item eight, curriculum and instruction, eight A, approval of the Title I Part A grant application to OSPI.
The deputy superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends that the Board of Directors approve the submission of the Title I Part A grant application in the amount of nine million, seven hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, and if funded, approve expenditure of funds according to appropriate guidelines.
Move approval?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Can I ask you a question?
Director Viall?
I assume that because this waiver is not in place from the, during No Child Left Behind, we will not be able to use those dollars to fund preschool for next year?
We are the only state that still has the restrictions of not having a waiver, and we have.
So the answer to that is yes?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that when we talk about those funds that we had two years ago when we started Title I preschools, we no longer have because the state of Washington doesn't have a waiver from the No Child Left Behind Act. So we, as a district, then picked that up through our special levies. But we do use these for other programs, but that was a major fiscal impact on us two, a year ago. And we're continuing in our spirit of our commitment to early learning to carry forward and fund that through special levies, our special levy dollars. And I want to make just one off, an aside comment. On Monday, Dr. Garcia and I were invited over to Mann School with Senator Patty Murray, and after she saw what we were doing with Jump Start and preschool and that, she said, I'm going back to Washington, said this on one of the soundbites for King Five TV, that Tacoma Public Schools are a national model for preschool. So I think we'd pack ourselves on the back, but this title issue is something that needs to be solved, particularly in McCleary, if the legislature goes and decides to play with our levy dollars. That could very much impact what we choose to do in this district. So that's just a comment in relation to these title dollars, that they're very restrictive. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Item eight B, recommendation for board action on innovative schools.
The deputy superintendent on behalf of the superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors make a determination as to whether or not the board will authorize any new innovative schools.
Is there a motion?
I move approval.
You want me to say what we're going to? I was going to do that, Debbie, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
What we're going to approve.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll put it on the table for a motion.
So I'll just draw.
The first thing we're doing, Director Viall, is determining whether or not you will make a decision.
All right. I'll second that motion.
Any questions or comments? Legal counsel?
This is one of those entertaining portions where the superintendent set the board up to make whatever decision you so chose. So this is her recommendation to you to make a decision. And so after you accept her recommendation, one of you would need to move a proposal of some sort and then take a vote on that.
So would we first have to pass this?
Correct.
And then we could?
Yes. And then we can make a motion for a proposal.
Don't make up the rules. I'll just tell you what they are.
And the way this is written, it infers, I'm sorry, may I?
Sure.
It says that the board will authorize any new innovative schools, but it doesn't say this year, so we have to infer ever.
Well, unless somebody makes a motion to the contrary.
Correct. That's the fact. Sorry.
That's when the fun starts.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero.
Now, if any of you have a motion for your colleagues to consider on this topic, would be a good time to introduce that.
Director Viall?
Thank you. Before I make this motion, I'd just like to comment that this motion is made up of comments that we got from the public, what we felt like was some of the feelings of our board members as we've gone through this. We spent a lot of time being very thoughtful and deliberative, comments from our staff on what's doable, what's not, from the proposals. So this is a motion that's made after much thought and much thinking about what is best for kids, and that's our bottom line, and how we can address some of the issues that we continually need to address. And I thank Vibrant Schools for reminding us of that tonight. So I will consider, I will move that, this has two parts, A and B, that A, we move forward with the planning of IDEA in the 2015 school year. And that I would like it made clear in this motion that the board will determine if we are able to open doors based on this year's planning in 2016, based upon what we see. So the planning process should demonstrate that school will start small, freshman only, and be willing to grow if we are comfortable with the state's future funding capacity and its local impacts. This model, why we're proposing this is that the model has proven excellent results in the past that are directly tied to strategic plan benchmarks. This will be the same model as SOTA and SAMI. The board has also communicated regularly that we have a process to create and foster innovation, don't need an outside process, to infuse outside decisions in our local community. We have engaged the community in the current process, and we are following through with our commitments to provide equitable and proven options for students on the south and east side of our community while remaining financially prudent. Okay, that's number one. Number two, I'm sorry, A, A and B, I get, you know, this little bit of issues with reversing stuff I've always had. B, request that HNT Academy team move forward with a school within a school model at Jason Lee Middle School. This will be used as a pilot to determine if there's enough student interest and allow partnerships to be established. Why am I proposing this? The board likes the concept, however, that it is, likes the concept, however, it is not a model that has produced evidence that it is effective. The school within a school approach will allow the board to examine its effectiveness and student interest. Additionally, this approach will allow the team time to fully examine its plan prior to proposed implementation in 2017-18. We have used a similar approach in the past, for example, Lincoln Center prior to Lincoln 2.0. This will also give us the board time to better understand the potential negative impacts, again, of the levy decision in the next biennium prior to opening doors. And third, the board will request the staff to develop a quarterly monitoring schedule for the planning process and legislative action regarding negative impacts on our ability to implement in 2016-17. The calendar should facilitate a formal conversation every other month in the form of a report to the board. This will give us the board ample opportunity to remain informed of progress or lack of progress, and ultimately make that decision at the end of next year whether we want to delay the opening of any new schools. Also, D would be request the staff create and reserve full budget capacity in our new two-year budget cycle for implementation. If we are unable to move forward with implementation due to potential negative impacts of a levy swab, then we have created some flexibility in our budget that can be reused to preserve existing efforts that are producing results, thus reducing our financial risks. And I want it to be very clear that this full budget capacity is not to be allocated for planning, but rather it is the alignment to our two, for our budgeting for priorities I know that's a long motion, but it's an outline of what we want to do, and is there anyone else?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have.
Director Winscoe?
I have a few comments. So SOTA and SAMI have been so popular in our community, and every year, they turn away hundreds of people who are unable to attend those programs. And when we look at the charter schools that are going in, I think this is probably a pretty good move. But the worry is what it's going to do to the comprehensive high schools, and I know the principals probably have some concerns. Have we talked to the principals as a cohort, the high school principals, and asked them if they are concerned and what will happen?
Dr. Garcia?
We've talked with staff. We've allowed staff to have, provide input. Concerns is always enrollment. Our schools are, specifically, as you can see around enrollment trends at our high schools, they continue to grow. And I attribute that directly to those schools' efforts on providing kids a quality education. There's always a concern whether or not school populations will go down. Some school populations go down, some school populations go up. Some schools and school leadership team are very comfortable with other options for kids in the district. Some have various concerns for other reasons. The decision, we've never asked them to take a vote. We believe passionately that this is the board's decision, and you've asked to collect feedback from various sources.
Okay, so while we are going to be giving money to this IDEA especially, I'm really more concerned about the high school than I am about the middle school, which I don't think will impact other schools. So I would like to see a financial, you know, not to subtract from those other comprehensive schools to do harm to them in the future, and to balance that out. You know, I just think that would be important.
One important factor, and it's in their proposal, is that they have, will take a similar recruitment process that has already been established in SAMI and SOTA. And that model says that they will allow a lottery spot for so many spots within each middle school zone. And so that has helped with the negative impact of all kids coming from one side of town, because they have filled out the forms faster, or in that approach. And you really led that charge, well, I can tell you, it was back in 2012, because it was one of my first board meetings. And you had the team come and do a proposal about that. It's also really aligns with your equity policy that ensures that there are seats available for various parts of students apart of towns. So that, I think, will help address are all the students coming from one school or not. With that said, we, if you choose to move forward with this, and the board wishes, we would build a financial package to support that. The other piece I'd like to add is, in the RFP specifically, it lets all the proposals, the very last bullet is an important one, additional requirements will be negotiated with the selected proposer. So your comments, as you go along, we will then move into that negotiation in saying, yes, this is the idea, but here's how that's going to look. And so as Director Winscoe mentioned, if there are specific requests, we would then work with each individual proposal. One important factor, and it's in their proposal, is that they have, will take a similar recruitment process that has already been established in SAMI and SOTA. And that model says that they will allow a lottery spot for so many spots within each middle school zone. And so that has helped with the negative impact of all kids coming from one side of town, because they have filled out the forms faster, or in that approach. And you really led that charge, well I can tell you, it was back in 2012 because it was one of my first board meetings. And you had the team come and do a proposal and about that. It's also really aligns with your equity policy that ensures that there are seats available for various parts of, students apart of towns. So that, I think, will help address are, all the students coming from one school or not. With that said, we, if you choose to move forward with this, and the board wishes, we would build a financial package to support that. The other piece I'd like to add is this, in the RFP specifically, it lets all the proposals, the very last bullet is, is an important one, additional requirements will be negotiated with the selected proposer. So your comments as you go along, we will then move into that negotiation and saying, yes, this is the idea, but here's how that's going to look. And so as Director Winskill mentioned, if there are specific requests, we would then work with each individual proposal to make sure that those requests were honored.
So I had mentioned earlier that I like the idea of open enrollment and take people from, open up to other districts, and I think that would make it a very vibrant program, and just add FTEs to our district, so.
Director Oshka and then Director Vial.
So I would like to move that we divide the question, and this is the reason why. A, C and D, and A, C, and B, C and D, as two separate issues, so basically the school, the reporting and the money, the school, the reporting and the money. The reason is, is that I think that the common issues that we'll share between the two and what we want to see happen in the planning year are there, but there's specific language in the writing of B that I oppose, and I can't support. So I'd like to discuss that separately and have an opportunity to offer a friendly amendment. And I don't remember how division of the crestion works, I threw it out there.
You can move to amend the motion, and then there would be, if that, if your motion, if you move to amend the motion and someone seconds that, there would be discussion on your amendment, and then a vote on your amendment, and then it would go back to the main motion.
If it was kept as one motion, but when I move to divide the motion, it makes it two separate motions, and then we'd have to take them one by one.
Correct.
So I've just moved to divide the motion. So that would be a vote of whether or not we would support division of the motion?
Yes, and it would be helpful if perhaps...
I don't remember if we need the consent or not of the mover of the motion, but I am hoping that you're brushed up on your problematicary machine, policy, or you have your Robert's rules handy.
I can certainly look that up, but I believe a majority of the board can make, can approve that change.
Okay.
Director Vial.
I have no problem. I'm dividing it as long as we have a good cogent discussion about why we're doing that.
If Director Vial would like, as the person who made the motion, she can choose to separate her motion into two items herself.
Or we can vote right now.
Or yes.
Well, for the sake of not running this any longer, I'll agree to divide it into two separate motions.
Excellent, and then whenever you're ready to, you can continue your discussion, and whenever you're ready to vote on the motions, they'll be taken in order.
Okay, thank you.
Though I think it would be helpful if Director Vial's initial written statement was given to Ms. Beatty, so she can track this better.
It's kind of a mess, but... If I could respond Debbie to what your question is, hopefully that planning process we're going to do within the next year will answer that question, and we can look at after we did our, the, when we changed the way we do the enrollment at SOTA and SAMI, what impacts that had or didn't have, and that should help us, give us an idea, because it is a concern, I know, for everybody. Okay, thanks.
Director Oshka.
So I would request from the chair that we clarify which of the two motions we're discussing now.
Let's take A first, please.
So general counsel, would you please restate the motion on the table?
No, but I will suggest that you are now discussing item eight B, one A.
Eight B, one A.
A being the first of the two motions, the first portion of the initial motion made by Director Vial that was then split into two.
Regarding IDEA, regular reporting and fiscal management.
Correct.
So the motion was specifically to move forward with the planning of IDEA in the 2015-2016, make it clear the board will determine whether we are open to the doors based on this year's 2016 upcoming legislative conversations decisions. And what was attached to that was that the request the staff would develop quarterly monitoring schedule for planning purposes regarding specifically the legislation, as well as the, a calendar for implementation. I apologize that the staff included in your proposal, your amended proposal would include D, which also in addition to what I mentioned earlier, requested staff create and reserve full budget capacity in this two-year budget cycle for implementation, but it was made clear that the full budget capacity is not allocated for planning, but rather reservation for planning purposes.
Thank you very much.
So any questions or comments pertaining to the current motion?
May I?
Director Oshka.
Sorry. Things that I think that are probably of joint concern to make sure that we're addressing and planning, as we talked about this in innovative schools everywhere, and Director Winskill has referred to this as well, is making sure that there's equity proportionally throughout the district. When we came together as a board and looked at this, submitting this RFP in the first place, it was about looking at geographic equity of innovation within the district, and not just that they can get there, but they can get there within a reasonable transportation time with minimum hardship on the individual and the family. That being said, I just wanted to note that we are intending to implement a GIS system for our students in relation to the school on the west end being redone. So that will give us an opportunity to see where our students actually are coming from visually over the course of this year, and also, and maybe create better policies around how to ensure that kind of geographic equity. In addition to that, and everything I'm saying now, this part is going to apply to the second proposal too, so I'm not going to repeat it then. I think that we need to, when we look at innovation, one of the things, two of the things that we've always kind of talked about are both accountability and equity. And I think we heard tonight too, that we don't really have a clear policy on, what do we mean by, well, we do have a clear policy on what we mean by equity, but not how we ensure that we're accountable to it. And I would like to see if implementing that with these schools should they move forward could be part of that process, because again, our goal is to make sure that we're providing equitable access and equal opportunity and academic excellence for all students. And I think that would help that.
Okay, thank you, Director Vial.
If I might speak to the motion, the IDEA school, which is in industrial design, engineering, and arts, is in keeping with what we are hearing throughout the country for the need for engineers and computer people, and the same things we heard numbers of years ago in this country when we turned out lots of engineers and thinking people in the sciences. And there's been, there's a demand, we're seeing that with schools, other schools and other districts are starting STEM schools, this is going to be more than that. And we already have STEM, and I think it's an opportunity for our kids to learn about applied science. I grew up in a family of architects, and I'm glad that the art is going to be included in that, and I know what an amazing career that can be, and this gives our kids an opportunity to get those skills and get interested in those kinds of careers. The other thing is, in terms of the issue of equity, we didn't indicate that the school will be located at the site of the Old Park Avenue School, on South Park Ave, and trying to remember the cross street. Like sixty, or seventy something. Sixty-fourth, sixty-sixth, something in that neighborhood, so down deep in the south end. And that's an area where we have not had a school of this nature, and this gives kids that opportunity, so they don't have to, in that part of Tacoma, they aren't traveling all over town to get where they need to go. That will now give us a school in the south end, in the central area, and in the northwest portions of the city, that is, it will be a small specialty high school, and for some kids, that's the best place for them to go to school. And I think that this is an amazing opportunity for us to move forward on. So I would ask my colleagues that we approve the IDEA school, and that we move, begin to move forward with the planning, so that hopefully the legislature won't go play games with all of our money. And I would ask all of you, Vibrant Schools and everyone, when you go to Olympia, help us on that, because we are the most vulnerable district right now to receive inequitable cuts in levy funding. So Lucas and the rest of you, if you can help us out, that would be something that would be very, very helpful to us. I mean, that's my editorial comment, but seriously, we could face some, just, there's, because of the mechanisms and Rosalyn sitting there, I know, starting to sweat already. But anyway, I would ask that, as a board, that we take, we've taken some pretty bold and audacious steps in the last four years that I've been here, and I think this is just another one in our journey towards academic excellence for all of our children. Thank you.
I have a high level of confidence that IDEA will be successful. It's not an experiment, I look at it as an extension of a methodology that's proven. SAMI and SOTA both had a hundred percent graduation rate this year, and I see this methodology coming into the south end of Tacoma to do great things for the students that are able to attend and participate. So I'm excited to see where the planning leads us. I am maybe less than optimistic that the legislature is not going to do something significant that dramatically impacts our funding. We'll deal with that when we get to it, but I look forward to seeing where the planning goes with respect to IDEA. Director Oshka.
Just a little bit of clarity on the motion, right? We're, a motion is to engage in planning, knowing that we're walking down a path that nobody's ever walked down before, literally, we're the first steps. So anything could happen. So, because I've heard the phrase approve the opening of IDEA, we're not necessarily approving the opening, we're approving the fact that we're going to spend a year making sure that this is going to work, making sure that there's physical accountability with faith in those that are proposing the program and the concept of the program. But we're not saying tonight that in 2016, we're going to open IDEA. We're saying that we are committed to planning and seeing if it's feasible, and then taking another vote once that's determined. Yes?
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I think that is, if I may, is a little bit of a twist on your original request, because the proposal has a start date that says that is tentatively to schedule to open up 2016. Now the board has made it clear in all their policies and procedures up to, if the planning is not met up, forgive me, why, trouble, if it does not meet your standards, then you do not have to open the building. So it's semantics, but at the same time, it is a change from the request for proposal and the proposal that you'd be approving.
That's correct.
The proposal is saying with a target date of opening up in 2016 and 17, and the board in their policy says if you are not, if we're not satisfied with your financial planning, if you're not satisfied with enrollment with, in the conditions, and then I heard Director Vial specifically articulate the need, if the legislation changes funding dramatically, then we may not open the doors at that point. So something for you to consider, because the formal adoption, I believe, is accepting the proposal.
That's correct. May I ask, President Hines, may I ask legal counsel for clarification? I believe in the RFP, we said there would be a year planning, but I believe in all of our, our things that we do here, if there aren't funds available, we don't do it.
Yes, and in this instance, if the potential is using the Park Avenue School, the board would have to move to remove it from our surplus inventory?
Yes.
Because it's currently identified as a surplus building, and the board would have to take action to return it to the active inventory, so there'll be several different things down the line.
So when the RFP went out, I read through that this afternoon again, that if, guide me through, if the funds are available, if the planning does everything we say it does, then we should therefore, under the terms of the RFP, open that school, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. But that means if all the pieces are, that we ask for are in place, then we would open it in 2016 legally, I believe. Am I correct?
That's my understanding.
So...
Thank you.
So that also means that if in the course of planning, we find other things that are not already written down, that would implement or indicate that it might not be a great idea, we would still have to if the current letters that are written out are fulfilled. Is that correct?
Any member of the board who moves, who votes in favor of this resolution could ask the board, in favor of this motion, could at any point in the future ask the board to revisit it, but it would have to be a director who votes in favor of it.
That's correct.
Any board, the board at any point can also take an action item to delay the opening if it does not meet, and this goes back to that point that I was trying to make earlier, and not doing a very good job of articulating, I apologize, that the planning phases, if there are additional requirements that the board identifies along those that are not met, that is to be negotiated in there. So like I said, it is a little bit of semantics, but you are voting to whether or not to approve the proposal, which is scheduled to open at that point. At any point, you could take formal action to change the opening date, you have that authority, but you wouldn't, if you approve the proposal that has been suggested, you would not need to take another formal action to open it. The formal action would be to not open it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. So thank you for that clarity, I think it is important, and I want to make sure that people know that. I think it's a, I think IDEA is a great idea. Everything that I know about it, I think it would be a fantastic thing, and I have faith in the people that are behind it. I want to make sure as we're doing something for the first time, that we are acting with abundance, care, and looking at the whole district strategically, and that we continue to do so throughout our planning process. And that is why I've gone to such great lengths at this time. So thank you for bearing with me to ensure that there are, that we're not tying our hands to something without options.
Can I make one last comment? I apologize. You've done such tremendous heavy lifting since 2012, and I say that with all due respect. You have a whole series of policies, and one of them that sometimes gets lost is, you were so clear about both the equity and the accountability from stage one, and even your shift from innovating for achievement. If you remember, all those meetings was about how will we have a continuous improvement cycle, and Policy 2010 is grounded in your accountability for innovative schools. It's thirty-three pages of specific benchmarks and a one through four scale, you spent time discussing that, each one of them. And so I just offer you that as a little bit of insurance and to remind you of that heavy lifting that you've done, that these schools have to agree to, not all schools in the district, but innovative schools that deem that they want to be innovative and ask for the waivers due to policies or procedures, they have to meet that threshold. And so I, we will be going in with that agreement. As you adopted new benchmarks in June of 2015, those are the benchmarks, and that document is being updated to match that specific language that talks about exclusionary practices. And each one of those benchmarks is filtered not only by free and reduced lunch rates and specialized in English language learners, but by race, by policy. So I'm just offering you that as a little bit of background information.
Can I call for the question?
Sure. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero.
Okay, and so now you would be to item eight B, one B, which would be the second of the two items that Director Vial initially introduced, and then split into two motions.
Questions or comments?
Well, you all know I have a comment. Everything that I said previously, and when this was first introduced, I know that the team that put it forth was very enthusiastic about finding an east side or south end location. I also know that they're very familiar with the needs and inequities of that area. My concern is that the motion has it of it being a school within the school, particularly at Jason Lee. I don't know that there's been substantive study done yet to know that that is the best location for it to start, and that it wouldn't possibly be better started at First Creek or another east side or south end school south of I-5. That being said, that is a clue that in planning, we couldn't find out that that's true. Right now I cannot support the motion with Jason Lee as specified in it. I can support planning it and determining what the best location is with further study.
Director Vial.
I'd like to ask Dr. Garcia to respond to the issue of First Creek.
Well, or any other school, so let me just say.
I want to specifically have him respond, please, to First Creek about the SIG school status and where we are with that.
Okay, and forgive me if I don't have all the answers, but I'll give you a little bit of background as to far, when the school is labeled by the federal government as a school of improvement and receives a school of improvement grant, which is the school, SIG school designation, they file a multi-year plan specifically of both the academic, the support programs. That plan is approved by you, it is approved by the state Board of Education, and ultimately the Federal Department of Education. First Creek is in year one of that plan. So we are required to, in good faith, fulfill that plan at least for the next two years. So that would be the background of First Creek. Other schools on the south and east side do not have the SIG designation at this time, so they would not have that same requirements.
I just want to see due diligence in that investigation.
I would like to make a case for Jason Lee if I could, please.
Director Vial.
Thank you. Jason Lee may not be located south of I-5, but it has the same demographics as east side and many of the south end schools. Jason Lee has always been, in this, what we, when I grew up, Jason Lee was like a second-tier school, and I want to see Jason Lee move beyond that, in the respect is that, you know, that, the demographics that, that it, and it was just pure, by the way, that's just an image, it is not, you know, Jason Lee has produced some, came, some amazing community leaders came out of Jason Lee and Wilson and Stadium where they went to high school. But I think this is an opportunity, this program, for one thing, has already kind of been in a trial mode at Jason Lee, I know a bit. And the purpose of picking Jason Lee was because this is an untested program. It's something, it's not like IDEA where we've seen great success with SOTA and SAMI, and to have Jason Lee do the planning and take a look at... And to have Jason Lee do the planning and take a look at whether or not this is an appropriate kind of a program for, for a school, to be school-wide. The original proposal called for, would have been a school-wide program. But, we found that at Lincoln, when we did the school within a school, that it was so successful after the end of the four years, that it went school-wide and we've seen that success. And I think in terms of expenditures of fiscal, of our fiscal responsibilities, that we really should be doing a, a significant amount of investigation and planning as to whether this is something that will draw students. If it does, and if the planning proceeds that it will, and maybe, and we try it at Jason Lee for a year or two, then perhaps we could, you know, look at replicating it at another school. But, since it's untried and the fact that Jason Lee has already had some groundspade work on it, is why I propose Jason Lee. And also given Jason Lee's demographics. It draws a substantial portion of its children from the Hilltop and from other lower income areas of Tacoma. And for that reason, that was the reason that when I thought and discussed this with a number of people, they felt the school within a school concept at Jason Lee would be the best place to try this out. It may be at the end of that planning year, we take a look and, and we can do the same exact thing that we were discussing here. If it doesn't look like we wanna do it, or it doesn't meet the criteria, or they feel they can't implement it, then we'll know. But, I think the fact that a lot of work has already been done there and it does support kids of low income and kids of, you know, racial diversity there. That in the spirit of our equity, you know, we need to look at school by school sometimes, not just geographic area. And that's what I felt we needed to do. Because Jason Lee is in a pivotal geographic location in Tacoma. So, that's why I suggested that we do it at Jason Lee.
Director Wensky.
So, my idea for going along with this proposal is that this is, I see a leadership issue. We have a principal, Kristy Brant, who was instrumental in bringing this forward. It is her background, health and fitness and PE and sports. And she's enthusiastic and you couldn't really ask a principal of another building to bring, to put something forth that they, it wasn't their idea. So, and she really enjoys being at Jason Lee. She's really done a really good job there. She's really respected in the community. So, I think this is just a great idea for her.
Director Olsky.
So, I have nothing against Jason Lee. I think it might be great there. What I don't see is data to support that decision. I think that Kristy Brant is a wonderful principal and quite frankly, I'm confident that wherever she started this program, she could be successful in it. But, I wanna make sure that we're thinking about the needs of our kids first. So, with that in mind, I would offer an amendment to the motion that we're speaking to, to strike Jason Lee and say to a school to be, that's determined to be the best fit based on the outcome of data.
So, I'd like to comment before we consider the amendment.
Actually, we would need, before we can discuss the amendment, someone would need to second it to open discussion on the amendment. Because the amendment's now been made.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All right. So, now we're discussing the amendment.
The proposed amendment.
To remove Jason Lee as the school.
Designated site for.
So, I'll, so I'll, I'll use this time to, to make my comment. I, I, so I'd like to have Principal Brant come and clarify the program because I've heard, is she still back there? There you are. Help me clarify, as I have been talking with people in the community about it and people have been reaching out to me, there's been some confusion. And it's most often what people have expressed to me is their concern that they think we're creating a school for jocks. That's going to centrally locate athletes and give them PE classes so they can lift weights and play sports.
Before Principal Brant does that, I, I just wanna remind the board that Principal Brant hasn't had time to process what you're proposing, right? No, this is a.
Well, I, with all due respect, but she's the one that submitted the proposal. And I believe my question goes to the intent of the program.
I agree.
Not the location of the program.
Or the grade levels.
Our legal counsel has a comment.
I would say that right now, the amendment, the motion that's before the board is the amendment on whether to leave the name Jason Lee or not. And so, I would recommend waiting until after that motion is resolved to ask Ms. Brant to describe the program unless you have specific questions about if the program must be at Jason Lee. Does that make sense?
Yes, I have specific questions about if the program should be. That's where we're going.
You're gonna have to restate your question now, I'm sorry.
So, the comments, the most common comment back to me is you're creating a school to house jocks to take PE classes and play sports.
Right, and that's not the concept. The concept is, is that we, the human body was made to move. There's so much research, there's so many things out there that the more we move, the better it improves your brain. That is the basis of this school. We believe that if we can make kids physically active and move on a more regular basis, it allows their brain to be more engaged when they're in there doing the science, the math, the economics, whatever you wanna label the, the academic focus that they're having in that class. And therefore, then we would see a benefit that kids would be more academically achieving at a higher level. No jocks.
And what sort of research or experience do you have that would allow us to have a program that would do just what you've described?
So, my specific background? So, my, I am, I was handed a volleyball in ninth grade. It happened to work out for me. I got a scholarship and played volleyball and just went in and, so I'm gonna tell you my failure. I went in, I couldn't pass organic chem. I was gonna be a, I was gonna be a doctor. I couldn't pass organic chem. They said try education. I love the health and fitness field, had been a science background and was doing that. And so, for me, it's just that I've been a teacher of health, I've been a P, a PE teacher as well. I think that it's just a healthy lifestyle. So, that's just kinda my background, what I bring. And again, yes, I am an athlete, but that doesn't mean that I don't see the benefits for kids who I have at Jason Lee, who are not athletes. Who, you know, I had a mom send me a great email about some struggles they were having with us, with a student of ours with health. And they asked if we could be in the summer academy and she was. And this person has made great strides because, you know, she's physically more fit now. They just, you know, all these things that are benefit and they've then seen that. So, that's, I mean, that's just in my small world, what I live in. That's what we feel that we can, we wanna replicate so that all kids can have that experience, especially ones. Whereas I'm sitting back here and tapping my foot, right? Kids wanna move around. And so, we just wanna tap into making sure that they have that opportunity. If that's what they need to keep them focused and engaged to get the highest level of academic achievement they can. I don't know if I answered your question?
Yeah, that's very helpful. Because as I've examined the proposal, I'm very intrigued by it. I, I'm not confident that it's, or I'm not convinced that it's ready to be a standalone school. So, I look at Jason Lee and your passion and vision as a great way to incubate the idea, to see if it has validity, if there's empirical data that supports the outcomes that we, we think are going to be achieved. And that you lose that sort of synergy if you move the location of the testing of the program. That it's not something that is proven that we could roll out at another school. That there is value in having it placed in a school where you feel comfortable and confident that you can implement it in the manner that respects the fidelity of the program to achieve the outcomes that we're after.
I would agree with you, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask?
Doctor Garcia.
Quick clarifying questions. Will there be any WIA-recognized sports activities at the school?
No, there will be no sport. Well, that's a loaded question for this.
WIA-recognized sports that are housed at the school?
Wait, so which?
Proposal.
Okay, so for the original proposal, no. We were never, there was never any intention to have any sports teams in any way, shape or form. We do not wanna take away from comprehensive high school, comprehensive middle schools, who already have those programs up and running and doing fabulous things with them. So, that was never our intention, ever.
Okay, and the second clarifying point, just that I think may help the board, is the elements of the summer academy. Although they may not be the exact same, are there elements of the summer academy that you've been piloting that would be aligned to this proposal?
Yes.
So, the summer academy has, after its first summer, had produced some results that we saw growth in reading and math skills. Although it was a very small sample size, so we don't have the results there. So, if the board chooses to move forward with this motion, it's important to know that it's not completely untested. But, although as you're articulating, there's more work that needs to be done to figure out if it's a, a school with wide model. So, just to offer that.
Director Olsky.
If I may.
Yep.
From what I'm hearing, I guess I'm gonna ask your opinion.
Yeah.
As a school within a school, do you think that you could pull it off anyplace besides Jason Lee as a test? Right now, given relationships and everything else? Well, given a year from now.
I think it can fit anywhere, yes. I just think that for me, I don't wanna step on any other principals' toes in regards to the, the leadership that they have and the things that they're doing at their schools. So, that would be my only, a little bit of red flag, but I believe that I can work with anybody and that we could do it at any middle school or wherever, yeah.
I totally value our principals and where they are in leadership because they are the fabric of our district. At the same time, my first thought has to be for our kids.
Yeah.
So, I'm just looking at the due diligence for our kids. And if that due diligence tells us that it's Jason Lee, then that would be fine for me in this amendment. I just wanna clarify that.
So, the amendment is to remove Jason Lee as the designated school?
Thank you, Principal Brant.
Thank you. Call for the question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
Abstention? Motion fails.
Now, you go back to the main motion.
Let me vote on the main motion.
Okay, any additional questions or comments on the main motion?
I just wanna point out that I'm gonna oppose this for the reasons that I've so stated. And so, it's not in opposition to this program. I think this program is a great program that has a great potential for growth. It's just in relationship to those primary values that I've already expressed multiple times.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Or nay?
Abstention? Motion carries three one.
All right, now you get to go to work.
President Heinz, I just wanna thank the board. A lot of folks, this just didn't happen overnight. We've been working on this for multiple years, a lot of groundwork. I wanna thank the staff, everyone from the purchasing department to technology, to community outreach, to Assistant Superintendent Tony Pace, working with different school staff, working with different principals about what does performance matrix look like. Has put in a tremendous amount of effort. You're numerous, I would say hundreds of hours and of exploratory, what's best. Put you in a place tonight. You can see by the dialogue that it's a complex issue. There is no one more right way to do this. But, what is truly unique is there's not another district out there that does this kind of heavy lifting, which is what's next for our community? Where does it need to be? What is in the best interest of students? And how do we develop and move forward? And so, on behalf of the superintendent and the staff, thank you.
And I'd just like to thank my colleagues for this rigorous conversation. I think that it's proof that nothing is sugar-coated or rubber-stamped. And we wrestle to try to represent all of the students and the families in the district. And so, I appreciate that. And we, we did it very professionally. We were, we disagreed without being disagreeable. I think that's admirable. There are other boards that, that don't have that ability to really thoroughly walk through issues and debate them in a way that gets to the best answer. So, I appreciate that from all of you. We'll move on to item number nine, nine A, approval of resolution number one nine nine three, authorizing cancellation, reporting and remitting of warrants outstanding uncashed for over one year.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt resolution number one nine nine three, canceling warrants that have remained outstanding for over one year.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Nine B, approval of an interlocal agreement with University Place School District, number eighty-three.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent to sign interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with the University Place School District.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Item nine C, approval of Brooks Powers Group addendum number one to extend this contract for the 2015-2016 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends the Board of Directors adopt the amendment of number one for Brooks Powers Group for the 2015-2016 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Nine D, approval of Clover Park Technical College Interlocal Cooperative Agreement for Educational Services.
Assistant Superintendent for K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interlocal cooperative agreement for educational services between the Clover Park Technical College and the Tacoma School District.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Item nine E, approval of contract addendum number one for Maxim Healthcare to extend the existing contract for one year.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends the Board of Directors adopt the addendum number one to the contract with Maxim Healthcare for students, for student behavioral issues for 2015-16 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Nine F, approval of contract addendum number two for Career Staff Unlimited for the 2015-2016 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends the Board of Directors adopts the addendum number one to the contract with Career Staff Unlimited for Student Behavioral Issues for the 2015-16 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Item nine G, approval of contract for the Readiness to Learn Project from Hope Sparks.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends the Board of Directors approve the contract for the Readiness to Learn Project with Hope Sparks for birth to three services.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Nine H, approval of contract renewal for A Step Ahead with Pierce County.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends the Board of Directors approve the renewal of contract for A Step Ahead for birth to three services.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Nine I, approval of Educational-Based Services Contract Addendum Number Three, renewal for three years.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends the Board of Directors adopt addendum number three to the Educational-Based Service EBS contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Deputy Superintendent, do you need a drink of water?
Let's keep on rolling.
We're on J. I think we're moving into uncharted territories. Nine J, approval of Fairfax Hospital, Inc., doing business as Northwest School of Innovative Learning, contract addendum number two.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends that the Board of Directors adopt addendum number two to the Fairfax Hospital contract for the 2015-16 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Item nine K, approval of five-year contract award for kitchen equipment, refrigeration and repair service with BTU Mechanical LLC.
On behalf of the Chief Operating Officer, the Deputy Superintendent recommends the Board of Directors approve the award of a five-year contract for kitchen equipment services to BTU Mechanical LLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Nine L, approval of interagency agreement with Pierce County Juvenile Court for the 2015-2016 school year for educational services at Raymond Hall.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support on behalf of the Director of Secondary Education recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interagency agreement with Pierce County Juvenile Court for the 2015-16 school year for educational services at Raymond Hall.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four zero. Nine M, approval of interlocal agreement with Clover Park School District related to the Furwood Educational Program for the 2015-2016 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends the Board of Directors adopts the interlocal agreement with the Clover Park School District related to the Furwood Educational Program for the 2015-16 school year.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do.
Director Wensky.
I hate to have one, we're on a roll here, but. I was looking at the expense, I mean, this is super, super expensive. And I just have a question for people to think about. So, when we see students who have behavior problems and they escalate to a certain point where we have to spend a lot of money on them. Were there things that could have been done differently in their early years? Could we have identified their behavior, put them in behavior classes so that we could have remedied some of their behavior? And so, I just wanna put that out there. I'm not gonna vote against it, but it's kinda disturbing to spend this kinda money.
I appreciate that. If I may make one quick comment.
Sure.
Your leadership around making sure that every school has a social, emotional learning plan is really the groundwork of just the intent of what I believe your statement is, is how do we have an approach that is early warning indicators, screening tools? is how do we have an approach that has early warning indicators, screening tools, and as well as alignment of services at an early age? You started specifically at the elementary school. I'm not aware of another district that has a metric that says social-emotional learning is there. We have a long ways to go before we have full implementation of the Tacoma Whole Child Initiative, which is the groundwork for that. Partnerships with agencies like Comprehensive Life Services, support from the city, all those are targeted just at that intent to have that early support and necessary. And then, no student, just for the public's knowledge, is automatically put into a situation like this. Each student has an individual education plan, a team decision that supports that.
Actually, no, Dr. Garcia, these are for the students who've been committed to the Child Treatment and Study Center at Western State Hospital.
I apologize.
And so, they're there not by any decision of the district, but because they have been placed in the state's most significant mental health facility for children. And the Clover Park School District happens to be the school district where that facility resides. And so, the Clover Park School District provides the educational services to students who are committed to that facility. And that cost used to be borne by the state of Washington, and about two years ago, they passed it back to school districts. So, school districts are responsible for paying the Clover Park School District to educate the students who are committed to that facility, even though we don't play a role in the commitment of students to that facility.
Thank you, I apologize.
Sure. Vice President of y'all.
I want to call me out, that's been an ongoing relationship since going back to, I believe, 1973. I remember when that, I happened to signed off on that agreement, how many, how you remember things. But, these are children who are among our most seriously mentally ill children, and we do have some that do come, and they're, it's a court proceeding that sends them there. And when they, when they are ready to transition back into a school environment, Clover Park was the school district selected to do that because of their proximity. Child Study and Treatment Center is located on the grounds of Western State Hospital, actually on the, on the, I get my directions, but if you're coming down Silicon Boulevard, going this way, it's on that backside of it.
South side?
Well, yeah, it's toward the water side, and it's, if you go to the golf course there, you'll go by and you'll see buildings there. And that was a facility, at one time, was associated with the University of Washington. I'm not sure if it still is medical school, but I think DSHS does it now, but it does provide a valuable service. And so, this is something that we've been doing, and I know it was at that time, it was very expensive for the state to do it. Now, I see they've offloaded it on...
There are 92 children's long-term inpatient beds in the entire state, and the majority of those are located at the Child Treatment and Study Center. We also happen to have some of those at the Pearl Street Facility, where the district is obligated to educate the students in that facility, even though we're not necessarily their home district and cannot control who is placed there. So, it is the interaction between the mental health system and the Department of Health and Human Services and the education function.
Anyway, it's been ongoing for a long time, and I just wanted to point that out, this isn't anything new in over 40-some years now that we've been doing this, and that facility has been there, and Clover Park has done that as the resident. Like you said, we do Pearl Street, and there are kids that come from all over the state that are referred to Pearl Street.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four, zero. Item 9N, Approval of Interlocal Agreement with Puget Sound Educational Service District related to the Relief School, the ReLife School.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends the Board of Directors adopt the attached interlocal agreement with PSESD related to the ReLife School for the 2015-16 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four, zero. 9O, Approval of Interlocal Agreements for Educational Services for Students with Disabilities.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Support Services recommends that the Board of Directors adopt these interlocal agreements for the educational services for students with disabilities.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four, zero. 9P, Approval of Memorandum of Understanding with the Pierce County Skills Center for the After-School Satellite Welding Program at Lincoln High School.
The Assistant Superintendent for K-12 Learning Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve this memorandum of understanding between the district and Pierce County Skills Center related to the After-School Satellite Welding Program at Lincoln High School.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four, zero. 9Q, Approval of Purchase of Dairy Products from Meadow Sweet Farms for the 2015-2016 school year.
Director of Maintenance Operations on behalf of Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors approve the purchase of dairy products from Meadow Sweet Farms for 2015-16 school year.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
This is a local, a local dairy with its foundations here in the, in the community, and in the interest of disclosure, although there's no more family interest, it was purchased from a member of my family many years ago. It was okay dairy, and I'm glad to see us coming back to using local products.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four, zero. 9R, Approval of Two-Year Elevator Maintenance Gold Package from ThyssenKrupp.
Director of Maintenance Operations on behalf of Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent to sign a two-year agreement for 2015-2017 for the ThyssenKrupp Elevator Maintenance Gold Package to provide more complete maintenance and safety inspectors, inspections of district elevators.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to say, when I first got on this board, I think we only had one elevator in this district. Now, we have many, many, many.
Debbie, you're showing your raise.
I'm curious what we get with the gold package.
With the, with the package, because of regulations that we have with elevators and the conveyance they are, it's better for a company that does the job, do the maintenance on those on a, on a monthly basis and by, semi-annual basis, and takes the liability off the school district, really.
Great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four, zero. Item 9S, Approval of Resolution Number 1994, Adopting the 2015-2016 Budget.
Move approval.
Oh, we need the recommendation first.
Sorry, the Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 1994, Providing for the Adoption of the 2015-2016 Budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Already made my comments.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four, zero. Congratulations.
We got some fist pumps in the back audience there, so.
Now, about that 2016-17 budget?
Tomorrow, President Heinz, tomorrow.
Take the rest of the night off.
Thank you.
Item number 10, other business. 10A, Approval of Resolution Number 1995, Certifying Longevity and Use of McCarver Elementary School After Modernization.
The Director of Planning and Construction on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 1995. Certifying pursuant to OSPI guidelines, that McCarver Elementary School will be used for instructional purposes for at least five years after it's, after the modernization is completed, and that the useful life of McCarver Elementary School will be extended for 30 years.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four, zero. 10B, Approval of Resolution Number 1996, Certifying Longevity and Use of Stewart Middle School After Modernization.
The Director of Planning and Construction on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 1996, Certifying pursuant to OSPI Guidelines, that Stewart Middle School will be used for instructional purposes for at least five years after the modernization is completed, and that the useful life of Stewart Middle School will be extended for 30 years.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries four, zero. 10C, Approval of Resolution Number 1997, Intent to Build McCarver Elementary School Modernization.
The Director of Planning and Construction on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 1997, Certifying pursuant to OSPI Guidelines, that the McCarver Elementary School Modernization Project will be completed for the purposes for which the state matching funds are being provided.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Director Wensko.